...meetings, work session into session.
Work meeting?
There he is. And we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. There's a second, there's a motion in the secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And we have approved the agenda, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You'll be right in.
Go past you there. First item is, do we need to request permission to schedule an executive session to discuss personnel matters immediately following this meeting?
So.
Sorry.
Motion in the second.
Yes, Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Okay, first item under work session is that of the auditorium report. I have Mike here with us tonight to give us an update.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
My gratitude with man of the seat case and here again this year to give you the overall report with you. It's a draft report. It's a little easier instead of handing out, picking them up, handing them back out again next week. So I have a draft this week. Just keep that when it comes Tuesday, the regular board meeting, I'll bring the good copies down and covers. Very good report this year. We're again an unqualified opinion. That's the highest opinion we can give. A little bit of new guidance this year. On page two, you'll see that instead of A-133 audit, we do an audit of the uniform guidance. A little bit different criteria as far as the testing we do among federal programs and the way things are handled there. But again, we are getting an unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion you can receive, is a clean opinion. On pages four through twelve, I believe, or is the M D N A. Mrs. Borman put that together, and I think that's probably the most important part of the audit. Read through that. She goes into a lot of detail on what affected the district this year, what changes occurred, what caused the changes, what to look for in the future, what could affect you in the future. And one of the very important things, I think, is on the very last page of the M D N A, where she talks about the income tax and the clothing of the rain in the south of here. I mean, you don't have to be aware of something like that. Hope that it's not going to happen, but you need to have a cushion built up or something provided for you if something would occur like that. I go through and hit just a few of the high points. Do you have any questions?
No.
If you have a free to ask, I'll try to answer those for you. Exhibit A on page thirteen, statement of net position. Your total net position right now is sixteen billion, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Page fourteen, exhibit B, you can see there at the bottom, increase in net position this year, six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Your fund balances increased by that much this year. Not a whole lot of changes this year, pretty much a flat year. One thing that did occur, you see on exhibit B, cash disbursements or total expenditures there, thirty-five million dollars. Last year it was thirty-two million dollars. This year it's up about three million, but you look at the principal payments, the principal payments were up about two million, two point two million dollars. That had to do with the refunding that you did of the bonds. So overall, it's a pretty flat year, and things didn't change very much. Exhibit C then, there's the detail of exhibit A by fund, shows you the fund balances in the general fund, teachers' fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and the balance in the self-insurance. Exhibit D then, page sixteen, is the P and L for the district by fund. You see overall expenditures, disbursements for the general fund are up by three hundred thousand, up about five hundred and fifty in special revenue. There in the debt service fund, you see that they paid two point four million dollars. That had to do with refunding, and that's really what affected the expenditures the most, otherwise they were pretty well flat for this year. Exhibit F on page eighteen, the internal service fund, that's your insurance fund. Claims paid this year, two point three million, almost two point four million dollars last year, three point five million. Last year, you had a decrease in net position of six hundred and thirty thousand. This year, an increase of five hundred and eleven thousand. So a pretty good swing there. And it just kind of fluctuates with the claims that are being paid. One point one million dollars sitting there in that fund.
Any timing related to that?
It was, the big thing was, we had stop-loss checks due to is that we collected like two miles of seven.
Okay.
So we can put them in June thirty at both.
Yeah.
That's always an issue with the modified cash basis as far as what you're reporting on.
Yeah.
We'll show you some things later.
Yeah.
We'll drive that home. Page twenty-eight, taxes under note four. Excess valuation, about a five percent increase in your excess valuation this year, which is a good thing. That's one of the areas that, you know, you can control a little bit by setting your tax rates there and generating, you know, based on your needs and with the excessive valuation increase, and that's also a place that can generate a little more income for you. Page twenty-nine, retirement plan. This is the second year of the GAF-68 presentation, and this is where they want you to look at what you actually could owe if everybody, everything was due, had to be paid today. Back on page thirty-five, it's kind of scary there. Current rate, you'll see there, current rate, like in the right in the middle of the page for the PSRS, currently nineteen point eight billion dollar liability there. Last year it was thirteen. So based on the rate of return, it bumped you up six million dollars, almost fifty percent. Always going to come knocking on your door, want to check your nineteen million dollars, but this is out there. If you had to pay everybody that was entitled to retirement right now for as long as they were going to live, that's what your liability would be. Also on the peers, one point, well, just over one million last year, one point five million this year. So it increases based on that rate of return and actuary calculation.
So, we had this conversation last year. What's, what's the purpose of looking at it like that?
To show that you actually have that liability there if you were a accrual basis. If you're a accrual basis, you would have to book that liability, which puts you in a deficit. If you're a sixteen million dollar balance right now, and you book a nineteen million dollar liability, you're three million in a whole. So, oh, this is going to be paid out over the long term. They're calculating this from the youngest teacher working in the district, which could be someone twenty-two years old that would, life expectancy of eighty or eighty-two or eighty-four, whatever it is, really been sixty years there where they're going to accumulate benefits, and they're booking that liability now for the retirement liability.
But you'd also be contributing.
You'd also be contributing, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, which is, you're paying in and it's going to be covered every year. It's kind of, you know, kind of smoking meagres, I think. But that's what GAF wants. They want that out there so that you know that there is that liability that is going to cost you that much if things work out the way it is, based on this rate of return or lack of rate of return. They're basing it on eight percent. I don't know, anyways, you get eight percent now. Now, one percent increase in the rate of return knocks it from nineteen point eight to five point eight, and a one percent decrease also to thirty-six. I mean, thirty-six million to nineteen million. So that rate of return plays a lot of games when you're looking at long-term.
So, why don't, why don't they put the asset of, of the contributions in there?
Or the projected contributions?
Yeah, it was, I mean, yeah, this is projected.
This person said it would.
I guess this is the most conservative way to do it.
Well, sure.
This is what the worst-case scenario here, or nearly the worst-case scenario.
But if the, just so I get it, if the twenty-three-year-old teacher that we talked about quit, well, did quit, stayed but made no contributions, and you made no contributions on their behalf either, then you wouldn't have that liability.
No, well, they're taking into account people that would be eligible to participate.
Right.
There's an actuary of calculation, and they put the numbers in, and that's what they're coming up with.
But does it count the contributions, the accumulated contributions for that individual?
I don't think it does. I think they're just looking at what would be paid out.
I can't get my head around, yeah, there's no asset side to that that doesn't offset it, doesn't.
No, they're not looking at the receivable, they're looking at payable.
Right, right. It's almost like this.
Yeah, and it's right, it's right.
It's like the seasonal accounting that they're coming for banks.
Well, it is one of those things that says, hey, GAF-68, now it applies to you, and we're going to send you this report, and then the auditors, you got to put these twenty-one pages in, and we spent two hours today filing some report that's too decent.
No, I get it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
I get it. No, I get it while we're doing it, it just. I guess, I guess the point is, is if, since we're on essentially a cash basis, the point is, we haven't recognized those expenses.
Right.
And if we were on a accrual basis, we would have over time recognized.
You would have to book this entire amount right now.
Well, we would have gradually booked it. We wouldn't have to book it all at once because we would have been booking it.
Well, yeah, it would have been, last year came into effect, so you'd had a big chunk last year that would have hit you.
You had to book it based on, you would have to book it based on the projection of the employees we have. Here's who you have on peers, here's who you have on workers, and this is what the actuary say their payout's going to be with their life expectancy, and all of that would have been.
But if it were a true basis, wouldn't we also then be noticing the contributions? No, still not.
You can't have the contributions on for a year that you have.
Wouldn't we have been, wouldn't we, we wouldn't have booked that liability for years of, to that point?
No, tremendous, no. This is a, this is a.
Because it's just a projected liability.
Right.
It may not be right.
No.
Oh, it's not right. There's no way it's right. I mean, you're gonna, I mean, you're gonna have a new teacher that never makes it to year five to be tested in the program.
Well, that's a good point. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, so it's, you know, you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a support staff person right now that's working more than seventeen hours a week, that's going to work a whole three weeks' course and never work in the public school since the beginning. So you.
Okay, I got it. I'm sorry, I think we got hung up here.
We did, we did. We got hung up on, I mean, that's a big number there.
Yeah.
It's scary. The best, the powers that be decided, that's what has to be included here. And we really don't do a whole lot with this. We're getting this report directly from peers, from the systems, and they send you the entire verbatim footnote. This is what goes in there. You test the numbers a little bit, but this is what they're coming up with as the actual Page forty-five then, schedule three, there's a scheduled proportion of share. There's what's showing last year. If you look at our proportion of shares, the second column, thirteen point seven last year, nineteen point eight this year, based on the changes that occurred during the year. And that's for the public school retirement system, and that's for the peers down below, one point oh three four to one point five. So, again, it's just pretty scary when you're looking at numbers like that. But like I said, they're not going to come, say, you're, you owe us nineteen million dollars right now. This is over the very long term there. Page forty-nine, schedule seven, schedule revenues collected by source. And there's just a detail of the revenue that came into each fund. One of the things you'll notice is the federal revenue, four point seven million dollars. Last year was three point one million dollars. That's basically a timing difference causes some ups and downs there, the way these final expenditure reports are filed and you're receiving the reimbursements. Other than that, things really didn't change very much.
That was the payments that we got after the start of the fiscal.
We had like nine hundred and something thousand across fiscal year.
Right.
Page fifty-one, independent accounts report on management's assertions about compliance with specified requirements in Missouri laws and regulations. Second paragraph from the bottom, in our opinion, management's assertions that Sikes and our six school districts comply with the aforementioned requirements are fairly state in all material respects. You're in compliance with all the rules and regulations of Missouri. That's a good thing.
We try. It's really hard to be compliant.
The auditorium is just not good.
It's not good for me personally at all.
Well, a lot of places we go, we have, the main thing we find is the budget compliance, where if it isn't, the actual exceeds budgeted. And it's not a huge deal there, but it is a finding. We also have other districts where they amend the actual on last meeting of the year. So they don't have a finding, which serves no real purpose. I really don't like them doing that.
Changes the budget after the year's over?
At the end of the year, last meeting of the year. They amend the actual, they don't find anything, zero variances. That really serves no purpose. To me, you should use your budget as a planning tool, and they're obviously not doing that. You are doing that. You make amendments throughout the years, things occur. That's why you should be using a budget. Page sixty, independent auditors report on compliance for each major program and on internal control of compliance required by. There's the new wording, uniform guidance, the new, new guidance that we have to follow. In the past, it was A-133, now it's uniform guidance. And there again, we had no issues there, clean opinions on that. We believe that our audit provides a reasonable basis for our opinion on compliance for each major federal program. And you comply in all material respects with types of compliance requirements referred to above. And also, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control or compliance that we considered to be material weaknesses. However, material weaknesses may exist, and they have not been identified, which we didn't test everything a hundred percent. So there could be something there, but as far as everything we tested, everything is in, you know, in compliance. Schedule eleven then, schedule expenditures of federal awards. Page sixty-three is a total, all we've programmed are listed there. A little bit, looks a little bit different this year because it's a system-generated report this year. Overall, four point six million dollars of federal expenditures, last year four point five, so basically right along the same lines. A little bit different notes to the schedule expenditures of federal awards on page sixty-four. And then on page sixty-five, we'll see a little bit of difference there with the uniform guidance requirements. The dollar threshold went up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the institution of set that be a uniform guidance. It was five hundred thousand in the past. Also, you see that auditee qualified as a low-risk auditee. You have qualified in the past, you had no findings, no compliance issues. You had been an A-130, ever required an A-133 single audit in prior years, had no findings, but because you are modified cash, we cannot classify you as a low-risk. Another part of the uniform guidance that came into play this year. That's just one of the rules there. They want it to be accrual basis.
Are all school districts modified cash or no?
About ninety-nine percent of the very large districts.
Yeah, I was thinking, wait a minute, what are we doing? Okay.
Yeah, but this is federal versus what we're doing inside Missouri.
All right.
Some of the federal agencies, they don't worry about anything unless it's over fifty million dollars, so. I mean, that's, they don't know what's going on in there, and that's why a lot of these rules come down like the pension liability. They're not worried about you here, they're worried about the big picture, so they won't even come to Sikes and Missouri and see what goes on here. That's just, just the way that it runs there. And we have a couple of letters to the, to the board of education, so heading on the first letter, I'll look at. This is a SASS one fourteen letter. This states that we have to report to those charged with governance, which is the board, of any problems we had or any issues. We had no issues. Most sensitive estimate, we affected the district's financial status, life's period on the first page, is management's estimate of the economic factors and subsequent year's budget as listed. As I said, I think Mrs. Borman did a good job on that, you know, she may be aware of that, that there could be issues out there. Also on the next page then, financial, most sensitive financial statement disclosure is footnote six, which is the pension plan footnote. Other than that, we really had no issues there. Everything went very well with the, with the audit. Always enjoy coming down here. Everybody's very professional and provide anything we need on the reports, and are able to provide that very quickly and efficiently. Management comment, there's the management, federal program reimbursement comment, there's nothing you can really do about that because of the way things flow through with the September deadlines and October deadlines on some of these final expenditure reports or the June thirtieth expenditures. What's on your books is going to reflect properly the expenditures, but then the revenue doesn't come in, so that's why you have some timing differences there or it could flow into the next year when you receive the, receive the actual reimbursement. Then we have the audit analysis, some graphs you put together, we've had these before. Seems like it helps to be able to visualize what we're talking about here in the long term. Rather than having to go flip through five or six years worth of financial statements and do a comparison, we give you about six years here, where you can kind of look through there and see how things are going from, you know, from prior periods. There you can see on, that's back several pages under revenue, property tax revenue by year that continues to increase as we see the excess valuation. Then there's our federal revenue by year, and there you can see the effects of some of these timing differences. Thirteen's down, fourteen's up, fifteen's down, sixteen's up. It's just up and down there with the timing differences and the way federal revenue is coming in from one period, expenditures in one period, revenues in the next.
Lori, would that be without those crossovers, thirteen through sixteen, would it be relatively flat?
Yes, yes, it would be. It would be. That's why we're showing guys, because we all pretty work on federal programs. I mean, it's, we can do it one year, the next year we don't. We can do it the next year, the next year it just doesn't happen. So that's the up and down, but, but if you just shaved that off, it would almost be a straight line across there if we just got in and got the money from DESI.
And then under disbursements, or total disbursements by type, you see that's pretty flat for the last several years, not much changed. Really, the only thing that's changed is debt service principal. You see that little, whatever color that is at the very top. When you do the refunding, it's, the expenditures go up, and then if you don't, they're down, and then they'll level off after that refund.
Twenty fourteen, I know we've been where the crossover came off the books. So that's why we got the spike there because we had to show that whole amount of crossover coming off, and then they shouldn't do the refunding. So that's why the spike in those two.
And then also under disbursements, there's some graphs for salaries and employee benefits. You can see that that's increased over the last several years, and now it's kind of leveled off there for salaries. Federal board expenditures under disbursements, you can see that's pretty level there, but if you compare that to their federal revenue, you can see it doesn't match, and it should match pretty closely there.
Jim, that's what the revenue would look like. Exactly, that's what it would look like if we collected by June thirty every year. That would be identical.
Because really, it's a wonderful one that, right?
Yes.
I think that's really about all I want to cover. I mean, the rest is pretty self-explanatory. Perhaps you take some time to look at it, if you have questions Tuesday when I come back, we can talk about that as well. But a really good report, I mean, you're controlling things very well. Unbalances increase, you're doing a good job of handling the district. It's nice to come and give a good report like this. Thank you all, and good honors.
Yeah.
So, I'm looking at some questions. I guess that's the end of my presentation.
And you'll go through this again on Tuesday, so if you, I mean, as you have a chance to kind of comprehend this stuff, if you want to email me, I can forward to Mike, or if you, if you want to email him directly, just call me and I'll get you his email address for the questions if you want to ask him something between now and Tuesday. If not, you have the opportunity to do it face-to-face Tuesday.
I'm glad we had you.
Oh, it's a team effort. It's a team effort.
I'm glad we have you.
So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
And Mike.
So Lori, the food service chart's interesting.
It, we had another good year. We had a good.
I thought about it too.
We, yeah, we, twofold, our contract with Erromark still has the lower price. Part of it is that the expenditures are down because we lost a lot of meals participation at the high school level, and federal rate went up just enough that on the other free and reduced meals that it compensated for it. But yeah, another good year. Still, still, if you look, if you look at our DESI food service revenue report, we're still in the red because we, you know, we went to red in two thousand, I think, but we're, we're not going to chunk off every year, so. Still a really good partnership in my opinion. They, they, I will tell you that when we start to look at the budget for seventeen eighteen, they're really wanting us to look at that community eligibility provision where we let everybody, everybody eats for free.
Like we're doing at the kindergarten?
Yes, so we're going to start putting, just shortly after the first year, we're going to put pen to paper. I still think we're going to lose too much money. I think it's going to cause us to, to be in the red for the program, but, but I did tell them we'd sit down and go through it. They, Erromark now has some schools that have done it successfully for two years, and they, they've got some pretty impressive numbers on what did increase with their participation, especially in the nine through twelve kids, because it just becomes, everybody goes down, you don't have to worry about them only going down because qualified for a free meal, just everybody goes down, everybody eats free. So we'll see. But yeah, another, another good year in food service, so very happy with that.
Anything else for Mike? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
This is somewhat of a, this is a draft copy of a draft. Looking at the straw man proposal and what we have gathered through the survey, through discussions, through comments on the survey, kind of putting this in a little bit more of a condensed feature, I guess. Trying to work on this, this straw man proposal so we can present it again to our community coming up here next week. With that, some discussion took place within an exec session with some of the teachers, and they were wanting to know some of the items that may be included within the facility. So I thought it may be good to just kind of include some things, and that's what I did there as far as listing like the, the classrooms, the library, art room, music room, so on and so forth, so everybody kind of had an understanding of what we're looking at with, with a new facility. Also, we have down there, we're still off Sea Building. Fleming wasn't able to make it up during the time that he scheduled, which was, gosh, I think it was a Monday after Thanksgiving. He came up yesterday. They did an analysis of the building, and they are going to get us something soon. Now, with that being said, talking with, with Scott yesterday, I, I think it's time for the board to meet with Scott Fleming. And with that, I would like the board to meet with him on January fifth, which is a Thursday. Help me with the dates, guys. Was that a Thursday?
Oh, I can make it. Yes, it's a Thursday.
Okay, we, we could also get Piper Jeffrey in here too, so we could talk about any wording we may need for a resolution, if that's the direction in which we want to go. But that's kind of the thought right now. We have a board meeting on January tenth, and kind of the thought was that what we may need if we're going to go in this direction, let's have like a resolution, I don't know, a call party or celebration or whatever, but let's, let's have some type of meeting on the nineteenth, because we have to have it turned in on the twenty-third or fourth, but on the nineteenth where the board approves this resolution, if that's what you all want to do. That's kind of the tentative timeline I was looking at, and I guess I just, I'm asking for discussion now on that.
So, again, when is Fleming going to be able to get numbers, realistic?
He's going to be able to get realistic numbers by the fifth. He, we had a discussion yesterday, or a real discussion. I don't think he feels confident in really getting us the actual numbers. He needs to have a cost consultant do that, okay? And so, he did say yesterday, he was very confident that he could keep this in budget. Budget meaning ten to eleven million dollars. That, that's, that's where we got to be.
But inclusive or exclusive of Sea Building? That's kind of.
That didn't include Sea Building.
Did not include.
No, it did not. We don't know yet what Sea Building's going to offer us.
That's going to be high, though.
Well, just the initial response, just initial discussion from him, I, I think it's going to be. He talked yesterday about the H V A C.
Well, the three buildings, the original C shape, and then the add-on in the library, and then the add-on in back. He said, you know, that's three different foundations you're dealing with. The H V A C, the, I mean, he was just.
You'd have to make it, he was a client, the restrooms, the doors, blah, blah, blah.
You know, it's. It's a lot to talk about, do you really want to renovate that? Do you want to build?
That's, that is discussion.
Right, and I mean, I think that's going to have a.
Well, that's.
It's going to be on our resolution.
That's kind of what I was going.
That would be, that would be.
But the Sea Building, if anything was done, would come from reserves.
So it wouldn't have to be on the.
It wouldn't have to be on the resolution.
So, I sent out that big old long memo to everybody, just kind of. Just kind of summarizing kind of what I was thinking about after all these discussions and the input and that sort of thing. And that's kind of, but I think what you're saying is, is that by the fifth, we would have more concrete figures.
Well, how's dollar amount, because they're going to, it's kind of like before, Rebecca, do you remember they brought in a cost consultant, had everything pretty much itemized as far as, you know, tables, X amount of dollars, and so on and so forth. They just list everything out.
My thinking in the discussions we've had was that if we can continue to try to convince that building some of the, looking at figures where the last time around, we were dealing with like a hundred and twenty-eight square feet per student, and this time, this initial run was, I think, a hundred and thirty-three square feet per student. If you went back to the hundred and twenty-eight square foot per student at about four hundred and fifty students, that would reduce the square footage to the amount that ought to get this project to ten million or below. And to me, that's really the number where it would be great to be, because you figure you could do that elementary school for ten, and then another one for ten, and let's just say you got to rebuild C building. You could probably, without extravagance, probably redo C building for a million and three quarters or something.
Well, the original, the original cost was four point two million, that was back in.
But we, when I was figuring, we really scaled down the size, because we were building a lot bigger building last time.
You're exactly right, you're exactly right.
So something, something south of two million.
Two things to consider that we also made that could affect this on the positive side. One, the safe room grant, two, the things I've been hearing with the new legislature and the new governor, prevailing wage, maybe.
Yeah, I just have something to say. That would be a significant savings to labor, I mean, like half. So that would be a big bonus.
There were two bills that were prefiled, which were, one is the, Joe Don, I can't think, it's the guy out by Kansas City. It's not in Kansas City, because the cities don't really care, because it doesn't save them nearly as much money as it would at Sykesville or outstate. I mean, that's where, the prevailing wages come from the cities, so they're just not that. But there were two bills, one was specifically for all prevailing wages, one was specifically exempted from school districts.
Also, and that's prefiled?
It's prefiled, those were the only prefiled ones that I saw.
What signals have, that'd be a big deal.
They have a better shot than they did a year ago. You know, I mean, I can't, you don't ever want, you don't ever want to take any of my predictions on politics, but anyway, but it's, it's, they've got a better chance than they did now, whether they can get out of committee or, who knows?
Well, and to that end, that's why Tom and I were talking to take the figure we were tossing around about C building, because I just don't think it's going to be accurate, and there's no reason to be acting like four hundred thousand dollars is probably going to address that. But I do think that, I mean, if that's what he's saying, we should have a lot more concrete information as we go forward. We have this meeting next week, and there should be further information. And how many, how many total survey results did we finally end with?
I had it right, it was almost seven hundred, I believe, is what it was.
You sent it to us.
Yeah, and I had it someplace here, stuck in my pile of stuff. I think it was almost seven hundred, who responded, which is a great number.
Now, the, you know, the only thing about that survey is it's not necessarily scientific. And it could have, it could have responses from non-district voters, for sure. But it's also, it's also a big number, so.
It does have that, because that was noted in some of the comments. You know, "I don't live here," he was a teacher, "I don't live here, but I will support it." Well, that means they're not going to vote for it, so, yeah, that's six ninety, I don't know how many were Sykesville voters.
But nonetheless, it's also seven hundred, it's seven hundred responses, which is a really big number, so.
Now, one thing that Scott has been working on is the site, and to make a determination as far as whether this facility will fit on this ground or not. He had to do that anyway, because we're with the safe, safe room. So, I've got a drawing here that Scott left with us yesterday.
I mean, why can't you get that out? Do you want to say where the safe room, where the whole safe room concept is right now?
Where we're at?
Yeah, sure.
The, the safe room did get turned in, the safe room grant did get turned in by December one deadline, by a couple days. And she did say that we'll know something by the end of January as far as whether we've been approved or not. With that, she did make mention that we need to talk to our legislators, or even if you have insight with the governor. Or, she was kind of mixed on whether we need to talk with our current governor or with Graytons. And she didn't really know if we should, who should we talk to on that?
Who's she?
Teresa Lemon, she's, I'm sorry, she's the project manager, she's the one that works intensively with this. She's done numerous safe rooms across the state, and their success rate.
She worked with Fleming's group?
No, works with Toth and Associates out of Springfield, Missouri. She's the one that, she's the only one that put in a bid for the project manager to complete the bid.
But you started saying their success rate's been.
Extremely high, yes. And the nice thing about that too, is they don't get paid unless they get the grant, so I thought that was pretty nice.
Do we know if there's any other schools in this geographic area that are going for a grant?
Well, the only one that we know that's already received, one is that of Jackson. The other ones were on the southwest part of the state.
He's pretty, he's seen more than years.
Yeah, they did, Bloomfield, Scott City.
Right, but nobody else is in this round.
No, no, not that I'm aware of.
And do we have any idea, so there was a process to select a, there was a process to select proposals, I guess, right? That you, to invite them to participate, I guess, right?
As far as the project manager?
No, the, the.
The safe room?
Yes.
Okay, in order to get involved with the safe room, it was about two years ago, we had to send out that NOI back to SEMA. And we sent one on C building, the elementaries, kindergarten, and I believe it, five or six, I don't recall. But we had to send those out, and we were selected based upon, it was based upon the disaster, the flooding that we had going here recently as a reason why we were selected in this area.
So what we don't, what we don't know is how many would be funded, correct?
That's right, we don't know.
So, I've contacted Holly Rager, see what she can do to talk to her, contact the state emergency management agency. So we'll see if that does them good, but anybody and everybody contacted.
I've talked to Wes, he works for the speaker, so.
Good, and anybody at Wallingford's office would be very good, if somebody's got a good contact there. So, we'll see, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Anyway, he did come up with the design.
Mitch Williams, would you flip that so that it's, please?
Yeah, that probably would work, wouldn't it? Thank you. Does that work?
Yeah, that's it.
Technically, it's upside down, right?
Well, yeah, I guess it was.
I don't know if it was upside down.
I don't know if it was really upside down, I mean.
Well, technically, the other way was right, because north was on top, north is down now.
Right, you're going to think about this in this room.
Does that, does that work for y'all, or do you want me to turn it back the other way?
I just think if you identify where north is, that you.
Okay, let's just say that.
Where's the interstate, where's the interstate at?
Okay.
Up here.
Yeah, the interstate would be up here, on the top, yeah. And so then, this is Georgie Day Parkway, this is Brunt right here, running through. And initially, what we thought as far as a safe room, that it was going to have to be situated up here, which as far as the look of it all, it didn't look very good at all. But apparently through conversation with Scott Fleming and Teresa Lemon, our project manager, they're able to put the safe room design down in this corner. It's back in this section right here. You know how the property kind of angles back, able to situate it this way. So it's kind of looking, it would be looking towards the northwest, be looking off this way, which is kind of neat as hell.
Where would the public get access to it for the?
They could get, they could get access off of George Day Parkway.
Or.
Well, actually, he'd be thinking about this one. You get off of Brunt, basically, I think he was looking at yesterday, coming in this way as far as traffic flow, looking at a bus pickup drop-off in the back section, along with taking supplies to our kitchen back here, which, any elementary parents, you know that it's kind of a real challenge every day to pick up their child from those buildings. So I think traffic flow. Do you recall how many cars he said that could fit in here? Was it thirty, thirty cars he figured would be able to fit into this area? He even discussed about putting some type of driveway along the edge here, so that folks could park in that area too. That's what he was talking about. I don't recall, there was a pretty good chunk of parking space, a hundred.
I saw a lot of parking for him.
Yeah, I don't know that we necessarily need that many, he may be able to scale that back. He was looking at too, maybe resituating this building either right or left in order to kind of meet up here and get a little more space for playground, something like that. We were talking about possibly looking at maybe some playground off the side, I don't know, something of that nature.
So is that rendering, so to speak, going to be used as, shown to anybody?
What do you think? I'll ask you all.
Well.
Let's just say that he was able to get a copy to me by Monday, because he said he could. Do you think it would be a good idea to go ahead and include that in some type of, because we have discussed this back and forth, administrator.
I mean, it's just a draft.
It is, yeah, it is.
He didn't really even want to let it go, I mean, was that rough? He said, I didn't want this to have a go.
He said it was good.
I think if you start having something that's drawn, then people are going to expect it to stay like that. And if they don't like it anymore, I think it's still a concept.
It is, he was going.
He was just trying to make sure it fit on.
Yeah, he was going to even put something on the drawing, conceptual drawing of some type, for people to know that.
But I, yeah, I think it might look like we're further ahead than we are.
We thought about it.
And it would be.
It is.
And so I would think not.
I kind of agree with you, because it really is just to make sure it fits there.
Right.
I mean, that, the end result, it looked nothing like that.
Right.
And you might create.
A feeling like you judge.
Here's what it's going to be looking like, and it's really.
The only thing is that.
Really, all that's done, isn't it, is set sample number of classrooms, safe room and other space, and just kind of.
We had to do this to make a determination of where we could put the safe room.
Yeah. I'm kind of with Rebecca, I don't know that I would.
What are your thoughts?
About what, Tom?
Yeah, let's say, as far as whether we should maybe present town hall meeting, a drawing.
What are we, let me, let's work it with this backwards.
Okay.
What do we plan to present at the town hall? I mean, what's our, what are we supposed to talk about? I mean, we've already talked about this thing twice, so what are we doing?
Yeah, we have.
I mean, I don't know what else to talk about, you're going to have the same people there, most likely. I mean, that's my only thing, is what are we having for, and what are we going to talk about?
Yeah, the thing that we were looking at is kind of that bullet item number two on the top, going into that item more thoroughly to get feedback from our folks as far as what is to be included within the structure.
And how that differs from our current, two older elementary schools, what isn't there and what is in this facility.
So how many, how many classrooms, first of all, what's the enrollment at Matthews?
You have roughly three forty.
Okay, so you're going to, this is going to be Matthews Elementary, right?
That's what we're looking at.
That's what, that's what the, right. So you're going to redo school lines, redo three elementary schools as far as who goes where?
Well, maybe, I don't know yet, because I don't know how everybody is going to be fitting into this building, if that makes sense. Because right now, you know, Matthews and also Lee Hunter, we've got people on top of people.
So I mean, I guess my question is, are you going to take Matthews and?
Put them there?
Just take Matthews Elementary and just place them there?
Yes.
What's the square footage of Matthews?
I'm going to get.
Well, I just think that would be. To go back to Jim's point earlier, he was talking about so many square feet per student. I think it would be nice to be able to illustrate how many square feet per student we have now, versus how many square feet per student this would be.
Yeah, that's a good point. The other thing is, also, I think we would have to take some, relieve some of the pressure from Lee Hunter, to bring some kids over there. And maybe not the kids that really run around the school, but some that were there, maybe a problem in other places.
Uh, Matthews, that work?
Yeah, thanks.
Matthews is twenty-five thousand eight hundred square feet.
What is?
Lee Hunter is thirty-three thousand.
About sixty.
This is roughly sixty thousand square feet. We figured about fifty-seven, fifty-six.
That's what we were saying.
What's this going to mean?
That's roughly, I think it was sixty thousand two hundred, is what they roughly, but it would work a lot better if it were about fifty-seven thousand. Well.
How many students would that be?
This would be, oh, four, I'm sorry, four fifty for this one.
But no, current.
Three forty at Matthews.
So how many classrooms do we have now? At Matthews, how many, how many? Not, I'm not talking about like special education and.
Just regular classrooms?
First through grade.
This is the stuff we're going to need to know, I mean, this is the stuff.
This is really what I've done. That plus, we should probably include, and I can only speak for Matthews, because I know the library is now a classroom, the music room is now a classroom, so I don't know, and I don't know if his numbers reflect that already. And I'm sure that's the same thing at Lee Hunter, they had things that were designated, that were designated for other uses that were in their classroom.
I think it would be smart to have, I mean, he's going to get, so.
Yeah, because to the point of, here's what we don't have, here's what we need, and here's what this is.
So my, see, my question is, okay, you've got three forty now, and you're saying, on here, you're saying that you're going to take it to four hundred to four hundred fifty. So that means that you're going to redraw the boundary lines. You're going to have to, I mean, if you're going to put that.
Yeah, there's potential, there's potential for that as far as, but honestly, Lynn, and you can better answer this, Lynn, than I can, as far as the boundary lines, I mean, they're, I don't know if there's anything really set, because we have kids on that side of town maybe going to southeast. It's more about equity in our distribution of kids around the buildings. We have certain areas down there served by all three schools, others by two schools, just to get balance, yeah.
So how many classrooms are there now, do we know that yet? How many classroom teachers, how many like regular classroom teachers are there?
How many regular classroom teachers are there?
There are four at each grade level at Matthews, first, fourth, second.
Sixteen classroom teachers, sixteen regular classrooms right now.
Right.
And how many are we proposing in this building? Like, not, just regular classrooms?
Twenty.
So if you, if you increase your enrollment, then you're not, where I'm getting at, we're going to decrease class size with this, because that's something that I would like to see, and I think a lot of people would like to see. If we're going to spend ten, eleven million dollars on a new elementary school, I'd like to see our classroom size go from twenty-five to twenty-eight kids in a classroom.
That doesn't have anything to do with square feet, though, that has to do with hiring more teachers.
Well, it would be both, because if you were going to put, if you were going to have, if you have more.
I mean, you can't have less kids in a class unless you have more teachers.
Well, you would have to hire more teachers, yes, but I mean, is there adequate space in this new building to add more classrooms, to decrease your class size?
Well, let me just tell you this, because a large part of the problem is. Well, let me just tell you this, because a large part of the problem is our, our special type program, okay? I mean, that's really it. So with this, I mentioned that there's gonna be twenty classrooms, okay, with this proposal. There's gonna be an art room, there's gonna be three special education rooms, and there's also gonna be a, a title room along with the library, there's gonna be an ISS classroom there too, you know? And they, that may not necessarily-
So they're not gonna all go to, um, so will the elementary be moved here, or will, or will you have-
I haven't got that, I haven't got that far ahead, as far as where they would be moved. Probably leave it like what we have right now, um, with the third and fourth grade kids going over there. But I don't know for sure, I haven't got that far into it. One thing too, that was really key, is that we have places available like conference rooms, because there's not necessarily a place to have a conference, like whether it be parent conference, IEP conference, whatever. We need places to test our kids, you know, we need certain, certain areas to be able to test our kids, and to also have like, you know, let's say, speech, and so, we need places like that. Smaller areas figured into this.
A lot of those wouldn't be full blown.
No, they would not.
Small rooms.
I think that those are important details, and I think what Heather's saying is right too, but I think that more classrooms, that's gotta be a cumulative effect of not just one elementary school, but two.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't, you can't fix that whole problem with one school.
No.
Okay? And they're not gonna, I, I wouldn't say we need to have conference rooms, cause people out there aren't gonna care. That's my thing.
Do what?
I wouldn't say anything about conference room. I mean, for our staff to have meetings, I don't think they'd bother to care about that. I think they care about where people do their music, where they can have PE, safe rooms, music rooms, speech, things that give them privacy with students that at that young of age would maybe embarrass that they have to go do something like that. I think that that's happening, uh, in our elementary schools right now, and it's not, it may be happening behind closed doors, but I don't know that it's real private. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
I just think that's important. I just think the more details we can give them, the better about how we're gonna efficiently use these extra square footage, and we need to have the details.
If you take four hundred and fifty kids, okay, and you have twenty classrooms, that's roughly twenty-two and a half, that's twenty-three kids, but that may not necessarily be the case, because you have some special classrooms too, so some of these, those kids are gonna be funneled into those, those particular rooms. So you could figure twenty, twenty-one kids per classroom, so in there, that's just a rough figure.
Mr. Williams, can I, can I share something?
Sure. Right now, the largest class at Matthews is fourth grade, is twenty-two point two five. That's the largest. So you guys may not know it, but it helped when we added those two teachers this past year at the other two schools, so they're, all of our schools are real low right now, with the exception of, we just worked out where one school, Southeast has the highest second grade of twenty-six, but everything else is low twenties. So we're doing really good this year, um, in part, we're gonna hire those two teachers.
Well, that's probably a pretty good point to make, actually.
I, I, I mean, I'm just, that's a concern.
Oh, no doubt about it.
Especially at the elementary level, is your class size, I mean, I know, we've had years, my kids, we've had twenty-eight in a classroom before. It's, I mean, it's way too many.
We would've had twenty-nine.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight.
We would've had twenty-nine, and we'd not added that teacher.
Yeah, and it was just crazy.
Our thirty, maybe, I don't know.
Which would be a very good, if you made that point. That's a very good point to say.
Can I say, one of the, we would've probably had this twenty-six down, but we had no other place to put, y'all may have hired another teacher, but we had no place to put them.
Yeah.
There's no room.
That's a really good point to make.
Take that three forty by twenty rooms, you have seventeen kids in a classroom. If you just take the existing Matthews kids and put them there.
Yeah.
Yeah, roughly seventy.
But I think there's room to add some kids in.
Well, I think it sounds like you need some relief from southeast too, I mean, based on what he's-
But he would be able to do that.
He'd be able to do that, yeah.
Because he's had to adjust this year, not just with those two rooms, but he's been able to shift some kids from other schools to those classrooms, schools with the senior teachers to reduce class size across the board. With this, he could do the same thing, just I think that's what Heather's saying is, with those extra rooms-
That is a good point too, maybe we should share with you that, that information as far as the number of kids.
Yep.
That's what I'm getting, I think-
I would share where we were, where we're at now, but where we're trying to be.
Yeah.
Cause you're right here, I mean, that's a primary concern that you hear from parents all the time, right? So.
I think another concern is, if, uh, you know, I have a second grader at- Lee Hunter, wherever, and we build this new building, is my child gonna be forced to change schools? I think that's a legitimate concern, and I, I, people have asked me that. But I've also had people, a teacher say, are we gonna be broken up? You know, like, if, if I teach at Lee Hunter now, if we build this new school and we add, you know, four more classrooms, are they gonna take me from there? But I think people want more definite, instead of just saying, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna add twenty, you know, we're gonna have this, 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 I think they want like figures to say, okay, we have, right now at Matthews, we have sixteen classrooms, we're gonna have twenty here, we're looking at lowering our class size, we're looking at, we're gonna do a little bit of maybe re, you know-
Restructure.
But it's really a fine line of getting into that, that far ahead, do you know what I mean? I feel like it'd be getting too far ahead.
I think people wanna know that before they place their vote.
What's that?
Well, we should know that before they're-
Oh, absolutely.
But not-
But I mean, if you're wanting to get-
But for Tuesday.
Right.
If you're-
But I think your, where your point is good is, directionally, yeah, so here's what we're trying to accomplish. I can't tell you if we're gonna move a teacher from Lee Hunter to new school A yet, because we're not to that level of depth, we're still trying to gain, uh, knowledge, but we sure is, we sure absolutely will know that by April. I mean-
Yeah, I think we have to know that.
And, but directionally, here's what we're trying to do.
Do we have to know if we're gonna do-
We're gonna have more classrooms, which will accomplish all of these other specialty subjects, plus, with more classrooms, we've taken class sizes down to an average of twenty-two and three-quarters, what the biggest one would be at twenty-six. But we've done that, but we've run out of room, and this will allow us to continue to reduce our class size. I think directionally, but to say to somebody on Tuesday, you know, what kid's gonna move from where to what school? I just don't see how we can do that yet, but you would absolutely wanna know that before you vote.
Well, and historically, that, a lot of the, the kid situation especially, is gonna work itself out, because you, you just, you ought to be around here in July and August, when the phone's ringing off the hook, that somebody's changed, but somebody, it, it doesn't make sense to you all, because you all are very dedicated to your school. You're a Matthews person, you're a Lee Hunter person, you're a Lee Hunter person, you're a Lee Hunter person. But the phone just rings off the hook, maybe twenty-five people a day going, I changed babysitters, and, and I love Matthews, but it's gonna be so much better on me if you could put them in southeast, can you do it? And they call every day. So a lot of the kid thing will work it out, itself out, and, and the teachers to a certain extent, not as much as the kids, but we've got the intent to return stuff, we got our first look at it today. And a lot of people will say, I'm happy where I am, but if you need me at another grade level, at another building, I'm flexible.
Yeah, even, even by April.
It's still those individuals, to be as individual as you can move to wherever you need to move.
That's what I'm saying, even by April, I'm not sure we can say, okay, Jimmy, we're gonna move you to Matthews. I don't know that even we can say that.
But I would say this, if that's what keeps a teacher from voting yes for this, that's a concern. I mean, you know, we have to do that at Math and Science. We're talking about a new building, a reducing class size, we've got such a bigger picture there. You know, I, I think when it really comes down to that, that kind of, we, we need to do that at Math and Science, am I not right? Teacher's got it dispersed everywhere.
Yeah.
From Drew High and-
Two thousand seven, it was eight.
And it's not, I know right now they're thinking, oh, I don't wanna get broken up, but when you look at the big picture of what we're doing is best for our district and for our kids, and I think, I can't imagine that being something that they, a teacher in our district would say, I'm gonna vote no, because I'm gonna get broken up. I would hope that would never be the reason they would vote no. You know, my, you see my point?
But even if you-
But I mean, you may be wrong.
But even if you were relocating somebody, you're talking about really small numbers.
Yeah, but like you said, it's not, I mean, it's not gonna be a, it's not gonna be a big issue.
We're not talking about an entire divide of a school.
Yeah, you're not gonna take the third and fourth grade teachers at Lee Hunter and split them in half.
No, never.
You know, you're not gonna take, you know, second, first and second grade at Matthews and go, sorry, half of y'all are going to southeast. But you, the number, there's just no way this scenario would ever work out that that had to be done.
Just the number of people that leave would, a lot of places, and those are new people, it wouldn't even happen.
That's a good point too.
Well, we saw this, the, the Excel sheet today with the return to intent, or intent to return, and I would say, uh, sixty percent of our teachers, maybe not that, maybe fifty, made a comment, you know, if I need, I could change grade levels, you know, maybe I'd like to work, change to work with older grade levels rather than younger. So there's some, enough flexibility that we could probably-
Plenty of flexibility with that, move people that would really want to.
Would not hate them.
You probably wouldn't ha, you wouldn't tell somebody they're moving, you'd go to somebody who would be willing to.
Yeah, I think a lot of that can be decided later.
Honestly, I think there'd be, but I do, I think there'd be a lot of people that wanna move.
But I think the same-
Well, because we understand that, I mean, our, we preach collaboration, so you, you have some tight teams, and it wouldn't be at the best interest of the district to break those tight teams up. But you've got, I mean, we had two people leave, two or three people leave southeast and go to Lee Hunter this year, and they, at their choice, they, they interviewed and hired, and we have that every year, so. I, I think a lot of that concern will just fix itself, and I know the kids will.
But I think, to, to your point, I think the idea would be to create these bullets of, here's everything that's gonna happen. I think the one thing we weren't talking about was class sizes and where that's trended and where, where, where we would be headed, and I think that's a big point.
I think maybe, um, I can, I can include, include that on here, class size on the bullet point.
I agree, but even, even by April, I don't know that we can say-
I can't, somebody can't-
With specificity, what teachers will actually be moving. We could say we might need to move four there, or two, or whatever the number is, but I don't think we can say, we're gonna move-
But you can't, you can't address it that we'd work through people who want to do it.
Oh, sure, 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 sure.
And that is a concern, that, I'm gonna pick you and you're moving, Laurie, and-
Yeah, I don't, I couldn't imagine doing that right now.
So.
Well, one of the things, this is kind of just a, going on to this concept, it's come through my head, not about what we're gonna do Tuesday, but one of the things that I'm recalling was, seemed to be a big deal to all the elementary schools, was to be able to have their special teachers staying at, you know, having a special teacher that didn't have to travel, so that they can continue to collaborate.
Can I speak to that too? Uh, what they really, what they really wanna contemplate at times, because right now, uh, the problem is, is the first grade, a first grade teacher may have a plenty of time at different times, uh, of a day during the week, so Monday may be eight o'clock, Tuesday maybe nine o'clock, and we haven't been working with that. Uh, I think we can get that solved. Now, we're still gonna have, we'll still have looting, so you may have a special class teacher, uh, that works both in Matthews and southeast, but I think we'll be able to get it so that five days a week, all the first grade teachers at Matthews will be able to have that common planning time, so they'll be able to meet later, and, uh-
So that would solve their, their-
Well, they said the last academic principal meeting, that was their, their number one concern, that was the lack of collaboration was their biggest issue, so we've been working on it, we talked to Mr. Cragerby about it today, as a matter of fact. So I think we're close.
So we'll work on continuing to craft bullets, and I think that's worth speaking to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause that's really the big, uh- Drill down a little further on that, and I think that's kinda what you're saying too, is that-
Any other comments or questions on this? Any comments on the drawing up here?
I think parking lots do need-
That's a huge-
That's a huge parking lot for an elementary school.
It is, it's, it's, that is, that's like a, a field out parking lot type thing.
Where's your bus pickup?
The back, right? Uh, they come down Brunt, and come around here, they'd be able to circle around and go back out.
And then where's your car line?
This way. And he was also, uh, talking about the idea, what did he call that, guys?
He called it a passway.
A passway.
Like, pull off on the edge of-
Yeah, it was deceleration lane.
Yes, that's what it was. On the edge of the road that they could go ahead and pull into, pick up their child, and, and then go off that direction.
Cause they had driven by there yesterday, and he, and he pulled over and sat on the side of the road there for a long time, and there was more than ample room for two vehicles to pass, so he thought the city might work with us on that.
The thing too, we were talking about yesterday, is we may have to have some type, and this is just down the road, we may have to have some type of barrier, fence, whatever on the backside. Although, if you look on that south side, there's a berm down there, you can't even see the school. You can't even see that piece of property till you get almost down here on the highway. Now, coming this way, obviously you can see, but if you're going towards the west, you can't even see anything back there. It's just kinda interesting. But yeah, I agree, the parking lot's just too big.
Can I, can I be devil's advocate for the parking lot too? I, I think we've gotta keep in mind though too, that we have to have ample parking for any kind of a, a student activity or a student presentation, because anyone spending Lee Hunter, when they have an activity, their car's parked all over the place.
You have a rough guesstimate as far as how many parking spots they have there? I-
Six, it's sixty.
Okay, well-
Sixty, actually, actually, it's sixty, amazing. But he, they counted yesterday, and it was six.
At Lee Hunter, there's sixty, or sixty?
And the new, new spots this year too.
Oh, with the new parking there, there's sixty.
And that actually, if I remember correctly, has-
Six is not always-
I, I know.
Sixty narrow parking.
They're narrow.
They're, that's for motorcycles now, just easy.
That actually, if I remember correctly, has more than a hundred spots on it.
It does.
He was gonna try to cut it back to a hundred, I think it was more like a hundred and thirty.
And he said maybe make some green space around the parking lot area.
So it is still too big.
If you have some of these deceleration zones, whatever along here, that might be not only a drop-off or pickup for kids too, it could also be a parking area too.
That's how it ends up working at Junior High.
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly. People pull along the side of the road there and park, instead of pulling in the grass like you have to sometimes.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right, we need to move into executive session. We've already-
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion to second to adjourn, all in favor? All opposed?
All right.
Thank you, Chuck.
Your turn.